With that, I think the last meeting that I had here in Roseville was about six months ago. An awful lot has happened. Just to recap very briefly, the principal concern that I have developed, in addition to the ones that we've all been concerned about, the continuing lackluster economy, the complications of Obamacare, but it's been a rather interesting summer. If you look back, starting in May, we had a speech by the President at Ohio State University where he extolled all the virtues of big government, holy deeds, to ignore those who mourn of the dangers of a benevolent, all-powerful government. And it was only a week or two after that that we learned that for the last several years, one of the most feared and powerful agencies of the federal government has been singling out ordinary Americans because of their political beliefs and using its powers to harass and intimidate them with the obvious intention of intimidating them out of participating in the political process. I did a teleconference call last night. I do these conference calls in addition to the town hall debate. Some of you were honored last night. We had a fellow from Placerville who, he was just a member of the Tea Party, and in 2011 came under an IRS audit. And during the IRS audit, he says that he was asked extensively about his links to the Tea Party. Now, one of the things that the IRS was doing with these groups that were applying for 501(c)(4) status, by the way, that's the same status given routinely to groups such as MoveOn.org, NAWOL, the ACOU, the Legal Conservation Voters. But in the case of the 500 conservative groups, mainly Tea Party groups, they were being held up and were asking for all of the names of their volunteers, their donors, in some cases, family members and business associates. At any rate, they were asking this fellow in Placerville about all of his affiliations that had absolutely nothing to do with his financial records or his tax liabilities. That I find very disturbing. Then a few weeks after that, we learned that the NSA, for the last several years, has been indiscriminately seizing the phone and internet records of millions of Americans. This is in direct contravention to the Fourth Amendment, which requires before the government can invade your privacy, search or seize your records, they must first provide proof under oath that there is probable cause to believe that you have committed a crime. This is now being routinely ignored in the NSA seizures. They're told, "Oh, don't worry, that's just for going after terrorists, and we're not looking at content, we're just looking at your phone records." So what number you called, how long you talked to them, and what time you called them. Well, first of all, those are your private records. If I know who you called, how often you called them, what time you talked to them, how long you talked to them, I already know a great deal about your personal life. But this past week, we discovered through The Guardian the X keystroke program, which included the actual manuals that are used by NSA analysts, and it is very clearly not being looked at routinely at email content without any kind of a search warrant. Then we found out just a few days ago, through another revelation, this time through Reuters, that they're not just targeting terrorists. In fact, this information is being passed on to local law enforcement agencies, and then the prosecutors are literally going back through a Orwellian concept called "parallel construction," passing this warrantless search information on the local law enforcement agencies, who then create a parallel investigation to hide the fact that their evidence is coming from a warrantless search emanating from the NSA. This is absolutely out of control.
Defunded.
Well, that's true. We're going to get to that in a few minutes.
We defended the other day.
Yeah, we talked a lot about that. But anyway, this is absolutely, no, I don't care whether you're a liberal Democrat or a conservative Republican, and by the way, some of this started under the George W. Bush administration, so there's plenty of blame to go around. The fact is that these developments are absolutely toxic to a free society. If you go back to the origins of the Fourth Amendment, they ordered the general warrants, basically indiscriminate searches authorized by the Lord Governor of Massachusetts. It authorized officials, basically, to search anyone's records or belongings without any kind of suspicion. This was so resented by the American colonists, it was taken on one of the American founders, James Otis, challenged it in court in a celebrated case in 1761 in Boston. He called it an affront to the natural rights of Englishmen. He called these warrantless searches, they were called "wits of assistance," "tools of tyranny." There was a 25-year-old lawyer in the audience that day. He later wrote, having watched this case unfold, he said, "I went away from the courtroom that day, as did all, from a crowded audience, ready to take up arms against wits of assistance." He said, "Then and there, the child independence was born." That young lawyer, who was John Adams, he believed that was the very moment when the American Revolution began. That was the first evidence that the colonists had, their king had become a tyrant. They specifically wrote the Fourth Amendment to assure that warrantless indiscriminate searches never again happen in America. And now we are seeing them on a scale absolutely unprecedented and inconceivable to the colonists, who ultimately rebelled against these kinds of abuses and usurpations. So I think that's something that needs to unite this entire country. And I want you to know I'm doing everything I can in Washington right now to beat the drums on that. We came within a few rows of getting an amendment to stop the NSA warrantless searches, and by the way, bipartisan vote to end those searches. The fact it was so close leaves me able to believe that we're going to be able to prevail in the very, very near future. But these are developments, the use of the IRS, and then the President's assertions that he has the legal authority to pick and choose which laws to enforce and which ones not. If you're familiar with the Constitution, it is explicit that the responsibility of the President is to see that the laws are faithfully executed. He does not have the power to nullify laws that he finds are either objectionable or inconvenient. This is another gross breach of the Constitution that's set upon our government. And in addition to that, we're now seeing the bureaucracies assert the ability to enact laws on their own that the elected Congress has specifically refused to enact. This is also a very, very serious breach. And I do believe that we are in the summer right now where we've got to make choices of people, whether we're going to restore those fundamental principles of individual liberties and constitutionally limited government upon which our entire republic was created, or whether we are simply going to ignore these usurpations and allow that Constitution to slip from our hands. That is the great question that we face this summer. I think it has far greater implications than even the economic questions that we are continuing to labor on five years after the stock market crash. So that's where we are. It's going to be up to every one of us to stand up and speak out on these issues. You've given me the high honor and great trust of speaking for you in Washington. I'm doing everything I can to beat the drums on these concerns. That's basically my statement to you tonight. On the state of the union, the rest of the evening is yours. We've got microphones. Okay, just one? Is that, just one microphone?
Yep.
Okay, well, get their attention, and so Elizabeth, our intern, and this is Michael, our other intern.
Hi, Mr. Mutha. Nice to take you. My question. I was wondering if you have any advice for us mothers with children who are being in or year under the Common Core program?
I mean, having just had my kids go through the public school system, the best advice I can offer you is watch what they're reading and be sure that they're getting the full picture on all of these issues. I very much oppose this whole notion of Common Core. I think, very simply, it simply exists. Do you know how the first-rate education system is managed? You go back a generation when we were producing a far higher quality of education in the public schools and far lower costs than we are today. There were some fundamental differences. You go back to the early 1960s, the teachers were in charge of their classrooms. There's nobody closer to God on earth than a teacher in her classroom. They had, we trusted them with a professional judgment to determine what teaching methodologies to use, how to get through to each of those kids that they knew by name. The principal, meanwhile, was in charge of the teachers. The principal had the authority to hire and fire. The principal negotiated with the teachers individually. The principal could offer a good math and science teacher more than a good gym teacher, not because we don't like gym teachers, but because good math and science teachers cost more. And they also had the ability to tell a non-performing teacher to shape up or ship out. That's all been usurped now, all of these. And by the way, the parents were then in charge of the principals. The parent had a complaint. That complaint got acted on because the principal not only had the authority to do so, but also had a local school board and some of those parents breathing down his neck to be sure they did. All of that's been usurped now. All of these decisions have been migrating to Sacramento or Washington for the past thirty or forty years. And I would put it to you, we are in a period of unprecedented federal intervention in our local schools. How's it working? I mean, after forty years of this, maybe we ought to take one step back and say, "Is this better than the system that we had before?" I don't believe that it is. I believe the most important thing that the federal government could do to improve our public schools is get its nose out of the question. I feel a great deal of blame at the doorstep of George W. Bush and his whole idiotic "no child left behind" one-size-fits-all program. One size doesn't fit all.
I found out yesterday that there is something installed in our cell phones that will alert us if a child's been abducted. And then I found out that there, and you can turn that off, I guess, because you have to go and move yourself.
I got the same call yesterday.
Okay, so I understand from reading that there's another alert, a presidential alert, that you can't turn off. Could you talk to them?
I'm not aware of that. I guess I didn't know that. If that's true, I would find that objectionable. In fact, frankly, I do. You know, I think the Amber Alert system is a very important system. It works, but people shouldn't be automatically enrolled in it. They ought to have the opportunity to opt out. But having said that, let me just, we approach a more overarching issue that this involves. And it's not about privacy, it's about the role of law enforcement in the monetary society, which is what we have found an ardentation upon. I used to work for the chief of the Los Angeles Police Department, a legendary guy by the name of Ed Davis. He was the chief for eight and a half years during, I remember the SLA shootout, I remember the Manson murders. He was the chief of LAPD during that of those years. He's the guy that actually invented it with Watch. During his time at the LAPD, while crime was growing nationally by more than 50%, crime was actually reduced in Los Angeles under his leadership. So I mean, he's got, he had just a tremendous track. And the central core of his philosophy of police, and this was the philosophy behind Make-A-Watch, it was the philosophy behind community-based policing, it was now standard in so many communities across our country. It was that, and it's shocking what he said, this was chief Ed Davis of the LAPD. He said, "It is not the job of the police department to enforce a law." "That," he said, "is the job of every citizen. The police department is there to help." And I do believe that the Amber Alert is an expression of that responsibility of each of us as citizens, to see that our laws are enforced and to call upon the assistance of our police departments when we see a car that's been identified, for example, as an abductee. So that's a very important concept. I support it. I just don't like the idea of being enrolled in something without my permission. And I think most people agree.
Peter, I wanted to talk to you about sequestration and the Obama stimulus, the 800 billion stimulus. And what I find is that the sequestration is kind of like a sidetrack for all of us Americans, because it's like this year, it's going to be 110 billion. Now, Republicans have been responsible for taking that 800 billion that Obama created in 2009, and every year since then, it's five years now, that 800 billion has been put into the budget. So after five years, we have, by now, four trillion dollars of chomped-up waste of spending has been put into our budgets. And here we are, talking about sequestration of 110 billion. Why did Republicans commit this?
Well, first of all, Republicans, the $800 billion stimulus bill, that was a one-time bill. And I don't believe, let me see on Mac.
Continue.
I do not believe, in fact, not a single Republican in the House supported that stimulus spending, not one. That was passed while Nancy Pelosi and Harry Reid had unchallenged control of our government. But you are correct that the budget has grown so rapidly that that became a standard part of it. Not the stimulus bill itself, but the total amount has gone up catastrophically. We've now been running billion-dollar deficits for the last forty years. For the first year in five, the deficit is actually down to $650 billion, which makes it the fifth biggest deficit in American history, only below the $4 billion-plus deficits of the last forty years. Put another way, about 37%, 38% now, the entire debt accumulated by the United States has been accumulated the last five years under this administration. It is simply not sustainable. Of course, your question, though, comes down to this, I think. We, the American people, gave you Republicans the majority of the House where all appropriations begin. A dollar does not get spent unless the House of Representatives says it gets spent. And yet you still have this one way spent. And my answer to you is you are absolutely right. The Republicans have not yet made good on our promise to bring spending under control. I do have to say that as a member of the budgeting, we have now three years in a row produced budgets that will place this country back on the road to solvency. The problem, the basic problem that we have in doing so is we've made some significant reductions in the discretionary side of the budget and the sequestering department. What we have failed to do is anything on the mandatory spending side. I haven't checked the figures recently. They may have changed. The last time I checked, a few months ago, it was still the case that if we shut down all of the discretionary spending, that's not a 2% overall cut in spending as the sequester provided, or a 4% or so reduction in discretionary spending as the sequester provided, but 100% reduction in discretionary spending. I mean, shut down everything. Send the military home, close down every office, fire every federal employee. That by itself is not enough to balance the budget, because the mandatory spending of Social Security, Medicare, Medicaid, interest on the debt, unemployment, and other federal entitlement proposals, that by itself is consuming more than the revenues of the entire federal government. Until we bring entitlement spending under control, we're not going to be able to bring our budget under control. Again, the budget plan lays out how we can do so while preserving the promises that we've made, an entire generation of Americans who've made all of their retirement decisions based upon those promises, Social Security and Medicare. But it requires action now. Now, I'd like to point out to folks, if you're 45 years of age or younger in this audience, Social Security is not going to be there when you retire. You'll get about two-thirds of what you've been promised, and that's coming directly from the Social Security actuary. Medicare actuary is screaming the same warning you ask, except if you're under 55. Medicare will not be there on the current course we're upon. We've got to, we've got to put both of those systems back on a secure financial footing that's going to be there for the future generations. The good news is we can do that. The bad news is we haven't. And the reason we haven't is because the federal government is still badly divided. Yes, Republicans control the House. We control purse strings. We, for example, promised not to fund Obamacare. I believe that we must make good on that promise, and I am determined to do so. But both the Senate and the White House have resisted any suggestion of entitlement reform. And until that changes, we're not going to be able to get this problem under control. The good news for that is, the reason why the Congress is divided is because the American people have been divided. But as I'm watching things unfold over the past several years, I don't think they're going to be divided that much longer. And so we may be able to see some very serious reforms in the very near future. We'll have the next couple of elections on this. You need to get Elizabeth's attention.
Just a quick comment. The American people aren't divided on Obamacare. They want to defund it.
Amen.
Okay. Anyway, can you look all these people in the eye and tell them that you're to add 11 million illegal aliens to a staggering unemployment rate, and then bring their families in? And then, why should we trust them? You're going to secure the border when you're not doing it now? I mean, this is absurd.
I basically just told you exactly that, but first of all, until the federal government demonstrates a willingness, an interest, and an ability to enforce our existing immigration law, I have no faith in its promises to enforce even tougher immigration laws in the future. So that's, we as a non-starter. Secondly, we already have a path to citizenship. It is a path that is being followed by millions of legal immigrants. I mean, again, here we are at the Sikh Temple Hall. This is a community that has been forced out of Punjab by unbelievable discrimination. They've come to America where they have found a common creed with Americans. They have obeyed all of our laws. They have waited patiently in line. They have done everything our country has asked of them to do, because they have come here with a sincere desire to become Americans, to see their children grow up and succeed and prosper as Americans. And we're watching 11 million people cut in line in front of them. I don't think that is right. I don't think it's fair. And I sure as hell would be a part.
Representative Mutha, I really appreciate you coming out to these front hall meetings. It's a real opportunity to hear your views on them. Two great quick questions about Obamacare. One, the President has unconstitutionally delayed the employer mandate for a year. And second, the Congress and their aides are now, I guess, being excused from participating in Obamacare. Can you comment on these two items?
I think that those items speak for themselves. First of all, as I said in my opening remarks, the President does not have the authority to pick and choose what parts of the law he's going to enforce. Now, that is a recipe for despotism. That is, you know, we pride ourselves in being a nation of laws and not admit. The President's responsibility is to see that the laws are faithfully executed, not to pick and choose which laws he will faithfully execute and which ones he will ignore. Secondly, this business of excusing the employer mandate, but not the employee mandate, is a travesty. And when you talk about equal protection under the laws, the big corporate friends of his all are relieved from their responsibility to provide for health insurance for their employees, but the employees are not relieved from their legal responsibility to acquire Obamacare policies, which are going to be astronomical. You know, that is, I'm outraged. The Congress, or the House, anyway, approved a measure two weeks ago that will delay both the employer mandate and the employee mandate. That bill has been sent to the Senate where no action has been taken on it. I had a bit of, I've been going, I've been having a debate with myself over what's the proper approach to take. And this is one of the things we're seeing on the overall debate over defunding Obamacare. The Republicans are united in their opposition to it. In fact, when it went through, I think there was one Republican voting in the House in favor of Obamacare, and he wasn't reelected. But the question that you have to grapple with is what's the best way to do it? Now, there is a group within our, and that's the only division of opinion. There is a group within our conference that likes the approach that Abraham Lincoln proposed, which is the best way to repeal a bad law is to enforce it. And I have to tell you, I flirted with that philosophy myself, but then it occurred to me, this is a self-described train wreck. The Senate author of Obamacare describes it as a train wreck. If you can postpone a train wreck for a year, should you do so? Absolutely. So that's the position that I take.
About Congress excusing itself.
Oh, thank you. Yes, yes. The other thing is Congress excusing itself from the provisions of Obamacare. You remember, when Obamacare was going through, Charles Grassley got an amendment into the bill that said, "If we're going to pass this and impose it on the American people, by God, we ought to live with it too." And now they have an agreement with Obama through his Office of Personnel Management that 75% of the cost of the Obamacare will be paid for by you, as you're paying your own Obamacare costs as well. That is an outrage, but it is typical of the way we've seen this law approached from the very beginning. I mean, you know the thousands of waivers that the administration granted to, mainly to labor unions. You can't pick and choose which laws you're going to enforce. Again, once you have a government that can choose to apply the law to you, but excuse you from the same law, you've lost that nation of laws. You've become a nation of whims. And that's antithetical to everything our country has founded.
I'd like to thank you for this opportunity. I'm going to try and sneak two questions in, if you'll allow me. The first is Senators Udall and Wyden have been speaking of the dangers of NSA spying for over a year now. And they had inside information, being on the Intelligence Committee in the Senate. And yet, a year has gone by, they've been saying it as loud as they know how to say it, that there's a fire here, we need to do something. And yet, it wasn't until the Snowden disclosures that Congress woke up. And I'm troubled by the fact that, you know, Wyden and Udall were ignored for a year. And I'd like you to comment on why you think they were not effective at getting a response to this serious issue. And also, the Patriot Act. It is the Patriot Act, which, of course, comes from W., President Bush, that enabled all this NSA spying. And I'd like your comments on the Patriot Act. And the last thing to change the subject a little bit is, last week, a poll was published that shows that 10% of Americans believe that Congress is doing a good job. That same poll shows that 90% of Americans believe that Congress is not doing a good job. And I will tell you that I'm in the 90%, and I'm probably not alone, with nine out of 10 Americans. And I'd like your point of view on, should Congress hold itself accountable for being viewed in a productive, helpful, supported way? Or is it okay for 90% of Americans to believe that Congress is an ineffective organization? And that's just the way it is, and that's okay with the people in Washington who are in Congress?
Well, it's not okay. I still have, I don't know. There's a wonderful quote from Abraham Lincoln that I had never seen before. I do have it. I was at a luncheon today. It was on the program in Kentucky because I thought it was very appropriate. And I think it answers your question. It said, "We, the people, are the rightful masters of both Congress and the courts, not to overthrow the Constitution, but to overthrow the men who pervert the Constitution." Ultimately, you can't get to 10% approval without thoroughly alienating both sides of the spectrum. And yet, this Congress has managed to do that. Again, I think one reason is Republicans are largely mad at the Democratic Senate. Democrats are largely mad at the Republican House. And by the time you get to... And by the time you get to both sides, you're down to 10%. We all wonder what's wrong with that 10%. Like I said, the Congress is divided because the American people are divided. And ultimately, that condition cannot persist, for exactly the reason that Abraham Lincoln outlined, because ultimately, it's our responsibility to overthrow those men who pervert the Constitution. With respect to the other issue, which is Wyden and the NSA, don't forget that Ron Wyden actually put the question to James Clapper earlier this year, is there any mass collection of data of Americans? And he flat-out lied under oath to the Congress. Had it not been for Edward Snowden and the leaks that he produced, we would still not know of this problem. What's that? Yeah, well, that's an interesting point. The point, though, that I want to make is that Congress would not have known had it not been for Snowden.
Was Wyden knew something was wrong?
Well, look, we should have known. You know, the Patriot Act came up for renewal. I not only voted against renewing it, I even passed a speech on the floor to my website, let's go to ihouse.gov, Wyden. Because it was quite clear to me that it could be used in that manner. Obviously, any power the government has, government ultimately uses, which is why we have a Constitution. Ray said it best, he said, "The Constitution is not the government's document, telling the people what we can and cannot do. The Constitution is the people's document, telling our government those things that we will allow it to do." Not just the Patriot Act, but also SISPA, SOPA, all of these acts, which have tolerated the warrantless seizure of records, have been playing with fire. And now we've learned that fire has been small-witted behind closed doors for a long time, and it's getting out of control. The good news is, that's been brought to life. If you remember, it was not only Snowden's leak that put the lie to Clapper's denial, but then you remember what the rest of the denial was? Oh, don't worry, we don't look at content. And as I said, well, we found out, then The Guardian comes through, I think this was also a Snowden leak.
It was.
Ex-Kiestrow is looking at email quite regularly, quite routinely, without warrants. And then we find out that these warrantless searches are not just for terrorists. They're sharing, and have been for years, sharing this information with law enforcement. And then law enforcement has been going and covering up the fact that the information used to prosecute American citizens is coming from their own research, and it's not coming from warrantless wiretaps and other, you know, warrantless seizures of information. This is just, it has just gone too far. I put it out that ours would not be the first civilization that has succumbed to this siren song of benevolent, all-powerful government. But without a single exception recorded in history, every single civilization that has fallen for this lie has awakened one morning to discover that the benevolence is gone and the all-powerful government is still there. And to those who say, well, you're just going to be holding us open to all sorts of terrorist attacks. Well, imagine how many terrorists we could catch if we put a soldier in every home. That's why we have the Third Amendment, to prevent that sort of thing. You know, it doesn't mean that we catch every criminal or every terrorist. It means that we apply principles of justice that are compatible with liberty, and those we do catch, we made examples. And that's the way it ought to be.
Congressman, thank you once again for having the expectation constituency.
Oh, listen, it's a pleasure.
I'd like to thank Steve Kimball for hosting this event, too, repeating this.
We've got to tell you, the statistics, anyone who is hungry, they feed. Not through the government, but through their own charity. This is the ultimate American religion. And it was a great discovery for me and for everyone.
As you recall, we had our last community event in Rockland. I stood up and asked, who was responsible for giving this stand-down order in Benghazi? I haven't heard an acceptable answer to that. In fact, our foreign policy seems to be one of cut and run, that instant event in Gaza. We close them down, and we hear chatter saying that somebody's going to be mad at us. And I want to know why we have ceded so much power to this chief executive? How has he been able to marginalize Congress to such an extent? And when is Congress going to do something so that people don't take alternative methods of conflict resolution?
As you know, I have not hesitated to criticize the Republican leadership whenever I thought they'd mishandled policy. I do believe that they're handling this correctly, in the sense that before we reach a conclusion, we first have to look at all the facts. The NTSB has a remarkable record of success because of internal ethos within their agency not to form opinions. Even when it looks really like this recent crack, where it looks obvious, their ethos is, we do not form opinions. We are there solely to collect the facts. We piece together enough of those facts, they will then begin to lead you to the appropriate conclusion. I think Congress is going about this the right way. We have six committees now that are actively looking into these various scandals. The IRS scandal, the Benghazi scandal, the NSA scandal. And what they're doing right now is creating a record, creating a collection of facts that ultimately will lead us to the appropriate conclusions. I think that's the appropriate way of going about it. And I know it's agonizingly slow, but it works. It just takes time. You know, I think it's Omar Khayyam said, the wheels of the gods grind slowly, but they grind exceedingly fine. That's what's going on right now. It's going to take months, maybe several years, to lay out what's actually happened in Gaza, what's actually happened with the IRS and other agencies, what's actually been going on with the NSA and those agencies. But as those facts are presented, I think that they are going to lead the Congress and the American people to the appropriate conclusions.
And respectfully, in the meantime, where do we go? What do we do? How? He keeps doing things and bringing up new scandals. So he set another committee in place. When do you stop it?
Well, there are, this is a fundamental constitutional question, Detective. Who owns the Constitution? I tell folk, you go to the National Archives, look at the building, filled with government documents. Every document in that building is a government document, except for one. That one's ownership is those first three words, big words, "we the people." That's our document, that's our Constitution. I think the point that Lincoln was making that earlier quote was, it's our responsibility as the owners of that Constitution to insist that it be honored and followed. We've got three lines of defense. The people we elect to office, that's why every elected official, from the mosquito abatement district on up to the president, is required to swear an oath to preserve, protect, and defend, oh, not preserve, protect, and defend the country. Preserve, protect, and defend the Constitution. That line sometimes holds, it often is failless. Second line of defense is the court system and ultimately the Supreme Court. That usually holds, sometimes it fails. Sometimes it fails catastrophically, and in fact, has been doing quite a lot of that recently. But there's a third line of defense. Sissons, I gave a speech after the Obama decision, said, the Supreme Court is not the only court. The only court is the American people. And you look at the two most atrocious acts in our country's history. One is the Alien Sedition Act. That was never adjudicated by the courts. That was overturned by the Court of Public Opinion in the election of 1800. The other was the Dred Scott decision, which was an opinion of the court. That was never actually formally overturned. It was overturned by the Court of Public Opinion in the election of 1860. So it's a long way of saying, these things happen as long as we the people tolerate them, and they stop happening when we the people stop tolerating them. I think that's what Lincoln meant when he said, the voters are everything. The voters get their backs sides too close to the fire. They're going to have to sit on the blisters of wine. It is a painful experience, but it is a learning experience. And at the conclusion of that experience, one hopes that they emerge sadder and wiser. And that's what's going on right now. Again, I know it's frustrating. You know, believe me, I watch these violations from, as they say, from the belly of the beast. It breaks my heart. Is Igor, yeah, Igor Burman's my chief of staff. Igor's an interesting guy. He's like 32 years old. He's got a list of accomplishments that are just amazing. Commercial pilot, he's an instrument pilot, still working his commercial license, attorney. He's my chief of staff, I think he's still the youngest chief of staff on Catherine Hill. Igor, as you can see, a young guy, 31?
31.
31. He was born in Moscow. His family immigrated to America, and when he was 14, they came here, as so many legal immigrants who come here, with a sincere desire to become American, and with a sincere desire to see their kids go off to America. In fact, his parents spent their lifetimes trying to get out of the Soviet Union, and finally succeeded. Came here to America, and the story that his parents tell of watching the same forces they spent their lives escaping from, stirring in this country, is just, well, maybe you'll be hearing a lot more from him in coming days. But my point is, the responsibility to preserve our Constitution belongs to us.
And they may die if our Constitution is being preserved.
Yes, it is.
Years of now will be too late.
I agree. And that's why we have to reach out to every one of our fellow citizens to be sure they are just as outraged as we are. And that's when change happens, and change happens everywhere.
First of all, I'd like to thank you and welcome you all for joining us at our Sikh Temple say.
Thank you.
As you already know, it's been many years since 9/11. Our community has faced much backlash since then. Due to the incomprehensible actions of a small group of immoral terrorists, our terraces have desecrated and symbolized hate. I mean, just in the past couple months alone, I know a man who was beaten, an eight-year-old man who was beaten with a steel rod while walking home. Another man was shot in his car while his 13-year-old son was washed. And another sick cab driver was also beaten by a very man who was serving. My first question to you is, it's been 10 years since these hate crimes started, and just now the FBI started to track these hate crimes. Do you support that initiative? And my second question is, what can you personally, that you see, Sikh constituents, both on the district and national level?
Well, first of all, I believe that a crime is a crime. And I don't, I get very nervous about punishing people's thoughts. The actions that you have described are absolutely heinous, and they ought to be vigorously prosecuted and firmly punished because of the crime itself, not because of what was going through the individual's head. With respect to the overarching question that you've asked, how do we stop these crimes against Sikhs? Your father, Gil, had it right. And that is, we need to become a part of the larger community. And that's what you've done over these years. And I think that you're sensing that now. You know, as I learn the Sikh history, and you'll need to help me a little bit with this, but as I recall the history, in the mid-18th century, in the mid-1700s, just as this country was being founded, 10,000 Sikhs were beheaded in one day by Islamic extremists in Punjab at the time. Is that, do I have that history accurate? No one has suffered more from Islamic fascism than the Sikhs. As I said, they are, and I think that's why you're here, because you sensed in the founding Congress of America, a kindred structure of right and law, kindred structure of principle. Lincoln gave a speech on that, too. He pointed out that, even then, this was in the late 1850s, he said, "Some of us can trace our roots back to the American founders. The fathers of our fathers were there at the time." He said, "But many have come Sikh then. And if they look in their backgrounds, they can't find a direct blood link to those days in this country." He said, "But then, they read that Declaration of Independence, and they read the principles of the American founding, and they see those proud words, we are all created equal, that we are endowed by our Creator with certain inherent rights. Among these life, liberty, pursuit of happiness, that to secure these rights, governance are instituted among men." And they see that they are indeed the flesh of the flesh and the blood of the blood of the American founders, and so they are. Those were his words 150 years ago. I think your community is finding that. And that's one reason why I wanted to have a meeting here, so that we could all get together as the great American people. There's only one race here, it's the American race. There's only one people here, it's the American people. We subscribe to economic freedom, it's not just an American nation we have, it is a uniquely American notion that's inscribed on the Declaration of Independence. And the more that we grasp that, the closer we become as a people. That's our whole motto, e pluribus unum, from many to one. From many people, one people, the American people. From many nations, one great nation, the American nation. That's what we have to strive for. And I'll tell you what I think is driving a lot of all of this division in our communities. It is this notion that instead of, from many to one, we have to take one great people, the American people, and divide and subdivide us into all sorts of loring factions. That's what's going on. And it is absolutely inimical to the whole concept of this one great nation of immigrants, because we're all immigrants, either ourselves, or we're the sons and daughters of immigrants. So I think the more we unite as a people, the less you're going to see that kind of crime go on.
Yes, I'm actually glad you brought that up. That's actually the question I have kind of based on. Despite what the other gentleman said on the left, this country is divided. It pretty much always has been divided, one right, and that's the great thing about it, seeing that one side versus the other. But what needs for it to work, they need to talk to each other, right? They need to talk. And what has been happening, at least as far as I've been watching, I'm young, has been that far. What I've noticed is that it has been getting extremely inclusive. And I was just wondering if there is anything that can be done to possibly tone it down, to stop the pointing of the fingers, to stop the games that are, the political games that are played to remain in office, that both sides, both sides are divided. I agree with that. I'm just wondering if there's anything that you can do to change it.
Yes, a couple of things. First of all, we have not only a model of bipartisan cooperation, we actually have the precedent. In 1994, Bill Clinton realized his policies weren't working, took a drop in the May elections there. What did he do? He reached across the aisle to the Republican majority at the Democratic Congress. Do you remember those days? They did some absolutely miraculous things. They cut federal spending together, cut federal spending by an astounding 4% of GDP. It went up 2% under George Washington's administration. Bill Clinton, reaching across the aisle and working with Republican Congress, cut federal spending 4% of GDP. They approved what amounted to the biggest capital gains tax cut in American history. They went after entitlement spending, and they adopted the welfare reforms that brought that portion of the capital spending back under control. And the economy responded to one of the most remarkable periods of growth and prosperity we've ever had. That was Democrats, that was Democrats working with Republicans. And unfortunately, the President has not done the same thing, even in the presence of his policies.
One side will stick to its gene, and not move at all. I mean, honestly, one side will be right, and the other side will be left, and it is not to be different. One side has sort of offered their hand out, while the other side says, no, this is our issue, we are not going to play the simple. Is there any hope of that changing?
Yes, yes, again, we saw that in 1994. And by the way, the Republicans responded together, they worked some real miracles for our country, and we need to do that again. And by the way, and by the way, the Republicans responded together. They worked some real miracles for our country, and we need to do that again.
Hello, Congressman, you're going to talk. I have, as you know, a vested interest in the IRS, as we were one of the groups that was targeted. And you made it in a passion speech on the floor of the House of Representatives, one year, if not more, prior to the release of there's a scandal coming out, on behalf of us, and nobody listened to you then. Um, my question is, my, well, my concern is, in reality, Congress founded the IRS. Congress, um, oversees the IRS, and Congress funds the IRS. And Congress has come to the party right now because it's a scandal. But what's going to happen? Is it going to blow away like Bass and Gereus did? Are they going to get to the bottom of it? Or, do you have the power, does Congress, not you, I know where you are, but does Congress have the wherewithal to defund the IRS and take this where it needs to go? And if the IRS is the one to oversee and lobby them, that they may have targeted us, not just as a group, but then us personally as well, that is a, a genuine concern for me. And I have a concern about trusting Congress, not you, but Congress, the rest of them up there. I mean, they just have no courage.
Well, you know, first of all, Newt Gingrich was once asked, "Why should we trust you?" And his response was, "You shouldn't trust me. You shouldn't trust anybody you loan power to. If you loan power to somebody, you watch them like a hawk." Uh, and, and again, I, I, I share your frustrations.
We really watch like a hawk.
I will, exactly. And, and, and keep doing it. My point is this, though. Uh, the Ways and Means Committee has been conducting extensive hearings on this. Uh, they've set up a, a website specifically to take complaints by folks like Larry Complacido, who was part of our conference call the other day, talking about how he was audited. Uh, he wasn't an organizer of the Tea Party. He'd gone to a couple of meetings, apparently. Uh, showed up on a volunteer role. When that group wanted to get a five-on-one C four charter from the IRS, I assume they turned over all of their names as the IRS demanded, and suddenly he's getting audited and asked about his affiliations with the IRS. That's serious stuff. Uh, and as that comes out, it's going to be laid out in our record, and then Congress is going to act. And I do, despite all my frustrations with the lack of action in a number of areas, I do have great confidence that Congress will act decisively on this. I, I don't think it's going to, uh, defund the IRS. The IRS is a legitimate revenue agency. I think it is going to impose major restrictions and changes in the IRS. Uh, and I, and I think that in a couple of years, there'll be an administration that insists on it.
Good evening, Congressman. Claire Madge from Lincoln. And following up on Jeanne's question, the gentleman behind me. Uh, I found the waste list that has paid for by the National Republican Congressional Committee. And a few of the items in the IRS items are probably the most germane right now. Eleven billion dollars given out in faulty refunds, uh, three point nine billion dollars in identity fees. And the list goes on and on and on, and adds up to fifty-seven billion, three hundred twenty-two billion, five hundred sixty-eight million, four hundred seventy-nine thousand dollars. Now, with the homeland security militarizing many, many, many police departments, we have drones. We basically are under surveillance. We have the IRS. As the American people, the only weapon we have to fight the tyranny that we're being jeopardized and placed under is to basically withhold our taxes. If we stop enabling all of government with our tax dollars, they can put some of us into jail. And maybe we need to look at our family fathers, and we need to actually be willing to give up our fortune, our lives, and our sacred honor. So I would love to witness that Congress that has American citizens. I'm sorry, I'm so passionate about this.
You should be.
We're going to have to stand up and be willing to fight, not with guns because we can't outdo the military that we have with our police departments, with the IRS. We're just going to have to stop enabling you and stop funding you personally.
But there's something even more important with you, and, and, and you're doing it every day as you come to meetings like this and speak out. You're doing it every day. You write a letter to the editor, or call into a talk show, uh, or, or write a blog, or tweet, or, or, uh, send articles to your friends. I often comment out that what goes on in Washington, that the great debates we have in Washington is just a reflection of much larger debate going on among the American people. You want to restore our Constitution. You've got to convince our fellow citizens of the dangers of it and the importance of restoring it. The good news is, everywhere I go these days, I mean, we're, we're on a month recess circulating around our districts. And the passion that you are now feeling, because you see your country in great danger, is being shared by an ever-growing, ever-widening, uh, spectrum of the American people. I've talked to a lot of Democrats who are looking at this and saying, "Oh, my God, we had no idea this was going on." Um, we do. It's not the first time that our country's drifted from these principles. And, and as, as we drift farther and farther from the principles of our founding, they begin to pull us back more and more strongly. And it's not the first time the country's done this. You know, the gentleman earlier asked, well, you know, things are so divided now. Well, you know, you want to talk about divided, there was a day in eighteen fifty-six when Congressman Preston Brooks walked across the, uh, Capitol, uh, took his cane, uh, and, and literally shattered the cane over the head of Congressman, Senator Charles Sumner, a man. Dander killed Sumner. Brooks constituents reacted to this act of barbarity by sending him replacements for his broken walkie-stick. Two years earlier, Lincoln warned us that a house divided against itself cannot stand it. If you recall what he said is, "I do not believe the house is small, but I do believe that this is divided. We become a whole one thing or all we are." I, I think that the word is similar in crosswords. We either are going to restore these constitutional principles and protect our freedom and produce our prosperity, or we're going to allow them to be abandoned. That's our generation's, uh, destiny, one way or the other. And how we're viewed by history, centuries from now, is largely dependent upon how successful we are in convincing our fellow citizens of these basic principles.
Well, unfortunately, with only fifty-one percent of us basically paying the entire bill, and we have the likes of GE and other corporations going, uh, you know, going tax-free, you know, we are not young people anymore. And the fact is that not very many people, I mean, I would have to say that we have become so soft as a nation. And I've been trying to put it into my kid's skull, and they don't get it because they, every time I talk to a young person, it's basically, it can't happen here in America. And thank you.
Hi, Congressman. My question is, as a college student, I'm concerned about the rising cost for middle-class families to send their students to college. And I was just wondering, what is your opinion, and what do you think is the long-term fix to making colleges where everyone wants?
First of all, we've got to do is stop throwing money at the universities. The university tuition has been going up four times the rate of inflation. Why is that? Uh, the answer's pretty simple. Because the government's been throwing more and more money at it. But guess what? You offer the universities more money, they will gladly accept it. They do so by raising their tuition rates. And now we have an entire generation, and I seem a little steamed up about it. I've got now eighty-one thousand dollars of parent plus loans, plus the loans that my kids have had to take out just to get them through college, just to get them through their undergraduate years of college. Uh, and they're graduating now into an economy where they can't find jobs. So we now have an entire generation, your generation, that is, is staggering under huge amounts of debt of, in a job market that's only offering the best part-time employment. I just saw a statistic that absolutely shocked me. You know, all, you know, the unemployment rate has totally just come down. And well, it's for two reasons. One of the reasons is because so many people have simply quit looking for work.
That's right.
Uh, and the other reason is, there have been nine hundred and fifty thousand jobs added to the American economy during this administration. Seven hundred and fifty thousand of the nine hundred and fifty thousand jobs implemented are part-time. Uh, so, so your generation, my kids, are, are graduating into an economy where they've got staggering debt that's been largely fueled by government spending, uh, and very little hope of, of paying off that debt in a market that's been absolutely crushed by excessive government spending and regulations. Um, I don't have a, a complete answer to your question, but I know this, we've got to stop throwing money at these universities.
Hi, uh, thank you for coming tonight. Um, we, we've seen over the, uh, the last several years, um, a liberal Democratic Party becoming more brazen. Um, and I think that's largely due to the fact that the media has completely embraced them, and they have nothing holding them accountable. Um, recently, uh, I, I saw that the, uh, the Republican Party might have an inkling of a backbone. When they stood up to CNN in NDC and said, "If you air the Hillary specials, we're not going to participate in the presidential debates." Uh, however, with twenty fourteen and twenty sixteen coming in around the corner, um, I think that, that we don't need another John McCain or other kind of quasi. We need a clear definitive difference between liberalism and conservatism. And I think that a conservative candidate at all levels, who is willing to fight and speak up, would go a long way. Can you comment on, on the Republican Party and maybe some chances that we might get?
Yeah, I, I think that those other stuff of American politics is often by end stand evidence years ago. Uh, and, and when I say those other stuff, what I mean is, once you understand this, all of the mysteries of American politics fall into precise mathematical order. Every since there were two parties in this country, there is the evil party and this stupid party. And on that subject, this, this right-wing creep is nonsense about how, how NBC and CNN had better not air anything pro-Hillary Clinton between now and the election, and they're already going to pull up our models and go home. I am embarrassed by that. I'm chagrined about that.
He stood up and said something.
You know, the, the, this, this is, you know, in this great debate over the future of our countries, we shouldn't be, we shouldn't be telling people what they can't say. We ought to be speaking our piece clearly and, and, and deliberately. That's what democracy is all about. How do you test the validity of ideas but to have a great debate among those ideas? However, I think he's right, is in Republican primaries, we should not be tasking the, the mouthpieces of the Democratic Party to, to, um, to, to moderate those, uh, those, those debates. I agree with him on that. But it shouldn't be linked to trying to shut down free debate on the other side. We ought to welcome that debate. I have found over the years that when we are engaged in that debate, we win. It's when we don't engage in that debate clearly that we end up losing. And I'm tired of losing.
Thank you for being here this evening. Um, I actually just had a really simple question. Um, how are you going to live life simply? Complexity, it, it doesn't drive growth. It doesn't drive the economy. It makes us all worry. And we all, every day, look at our little world, and we worry about, how, what are you going to do to drive smaller government and simpler ways of life?
Well, I, I, again, this is, this is what I've devoted my, my, uh, my adult life to accomplishing. And, and the best way I can answer is to return to those American founding principles of individual liberty and constitutionally limited government as a practical matter. What that means is to reduce the tax and regulatory burdens that are crushing the life out of the economy. We just had a hearing yesterday on the Sino, where four hundred people turned out to protest the, uh, the US Mission Law Life Service intent to declare two million acres in the Sierra Nevada as critical habitat for the Yosemite Toad and the, uh, Sierra Nevada mountain yellow-legged flock. Uh, this is, uh, these are in communities that have already been absolutely devastated by, uh, government restrictions and regulations. Timber harvesting down eighty percent in Sierra Nevadas, uh, since nineteen eighty. Uh, and there are so many of these things. We're taking them on one at a time. You know, the US Forest Service, the US Park Service, uh, is proposing taking out all the amenities of Yosemite National Park. There's a good portion of them, all the bicycle rentals, raft rides, uh, horseback riding. They're planning on, uh, taking out snack facilities, the ice skating rink in Curry Village, all of which would devastate the impact to the surrounding communities. And we're finding that, you know, not every step of the way in all of its permutations. But if you want overarching measure that I think could do more, actually, two overarching measures that I think could possibly do more than any others. One is the Rams Act that Congress just passed, that the House just passed together this week. I passed it in the last session, stopped it in the Senate. I expect this one will go through, but I expect maybe the next one will go through. And the Rams Act simply says, any federal regulation that costs more than a hundred million dollars has to be passed five to Congress. So people know who to hold accountable, uh, when it harms their prosperity. Another thing, and this is, this is my number one priority in the House right now. And maybe it sounds a little bit like inside baseball, but let me try to explain it as simply as I can. Ever since eighteen thirties, the House has had a rule that the House will not approve any appropriation unless it has first been authorized by an active Congress. It has to be authorized by law. Uh, that establishes a two-step process. First, the program has to be authorized, and then year by year, the Congress can only appropriate ones for those authorized purposes. Uh, over the past thirty years or so, that rule's simply been waived every time an appropriations bill's come through. Now, one-third of the discretionary spending in the US government is for programs that are no longer authorized by law. In most cases, they, they, uh, their authorizations have lapsed years ago, sometimes decades ago. And all of the worst wastes of money that you see in all of these pork reports can be, uh, can be traced to these unauthorized appropriations. I'm seeking a simple rule in the House that says that, uh, a member has the right to raise a point of order against any unauthorized appropriation in any bill, um, uh, and that right cannot be waived. Uh, that would force the authorized people to go back and look at all of the programs, decide which ones to die, which ones to reform, which ones to continue. Uh, I, I, I don't know of another act that's within reach right now. Because again, that doesn't require the Senate, doesn't require the President. This would be a House rule. I think it would do wonders to start, uh, ringing in the most abusive of these spending practices.
Thank you for being here today, Congressman. I wonder if you could give us what you know about the newly formed and rapidly growing security civilian police-type force, which is associated with the TSA under the Division of Homeland Security. It's my understanding that these folks are known as Viper squads. And they have this obtuse and obscure, this is the acronym for Visible Inter-Mobile Prevention and Response Squad. Congressman, who are these people? Who authorized them? I'm given to understand they have purchased millions of dollars of ammunition, millions of rounds of ammunition, armored personnel vehicles. Who oversees them? Who authorized the formation of this group? Is this government secret police?
Uh, well, they're not secret. Uh, but, you know, the, the militarization of our local police departments is a great concern. Uh, the media are just speaking out against it. You know, you need it in certain, very, very limited circumstances. Uh, but, um, I, I think what's happening is we've been, for the last ten or fifteen years now, we've been blurring the distinction between military and civil authority. We've been blurring the distinction between war and peace. Uh, and I think it's having devastating, uh, effects, uh, on our, on our basic liberties as Americans. And like I said, I grew up in the two with Van Davis, who said, "It's our own courtesy." It's the responsibility of citizens to enforce the law. We employ the police to assist us in that role. Um, we're going far and far to appeal to them. And it, it, I, I think a lot of it has to do with this blurred, uh, silver military. civil and military authority, war and peace. Well, we do. I mean, we do it as American people, we do it through our Congress. A lot of this, the militarization of our local police departments are being funded by federal grants that actually encourage this to take place. What I find most objectionable is the want of searches and now, a lot of information being passed due to domestic police agencies for the purpose of enforcing domestic laws. Again, we draw certain lines beyond which we do not allow the government to cause national violence.
But who created this, and who will?
Well, again, the local police departments are partially responsible. The federal government is increasingly responsible.
Viper squads? Why police, we have military.
You know, I agree. I mean, I'm not, to be honest with you, I'm not familiar with the Viper squads, per se. What I'm watching is, you know, police departments that used to be community-based and responsive to the community, increasingly militarized, increasingly set apart from the community. That's a dangerous trend, and again, I think this trend comes back to this business of war and peace. There used to be very clear distinctions. Wars were fought against specific governments upon a declaration by the Congress, and the voters were explicit that they wanted questions of war and peace to be settled by the representatives of the people, not by the executive. And Madison wrote a very lengthy and insightful piece saying, "Now, the executive has the most to gain by war because it concentrates all of the authority in the executive branch." That's why we don't want those questions decided by the executive. Those should be decided by the Congress, by the representatives of the people, and only once that they have made that decision is it to be carried out by the executive. Well, we've thrown all of that into a blender, and I think one reason why we're facing the kind of continuing terrorist threats that we do today is because when our Pearl Harbor occurred in 2001, we didn't respond with the same clarity and force as the greatest generation responded to their Pearl Harbor back in 2001. Remember, FDR didn't go before the Congress and say, "You know, we're going to track down every one of those pilots that bombed our ships and bring them to justice, and while we're doing that, the rest of you go shopping." That is essential, what George Bush said two days after 9/11. What he should have said is, "These Al Qaeda terrorists were acting with the protection, encouragement, supply, and suffer of the Taliban government of Afghanistan, and I am asking for a declaration of war, and we will put the entire microfury of the country behind that and get it over with as quickly as possible." Having done that, I don't think we'd be facing a terrorist threat today because every other government in the world would not tolerate the presence of any of these Al Qaeda cells within their country.
Congressman, thank you for being here today for your time. I appreciate several of these questions, especially related here about the tyranny growing from the government, gentlemen here about the Viper squads, very interesting questions. I'll find it brief. I have a quick remark, and I have two questions, all of which I believe relate to the situation of the Sikh American people here in the United States, as well as to the South Asian Americans in general. Specifically, my statement is that I'm glad to hear very much so what you're saying about the NSA and your opposition to it. I want to thank you for voting in support of the Amish Amendment, I think it was a couple of weeks ago. Unfortunately, one of our local representatives here, Ami Parra, from the road, failed to represent the people and voted, voted against it, one of the reasons that it failed. But the Sikh community here in California has been quite active in opposing the NSA spying on innocent Americans. We just had a "Restore the Fourth" rally on August 4 over in Sazerchatka Park in Sacramento, the second in a month, our first one was on July 4. And a lot of times, we had several Sikh speakers, including Shabha Jan Singh Binder and Dr. Neeraj Singh, who have spoken passionately against the NSA spying on them. So my questions are very specific questions. One of them is about a man named Narendra Modi. Narendra Modi is Chief Minister of Gujarat. Narendra Modi has applied to the United States for a visitor's visa. It's currently in process, but back in 2005, he was refused a visitor's visa by the State Department under Section 212A 2G of the Immigration and Nationality Act, on the basis that that act made scheme government, the foreign government official who was responsible for or directly carried out at any time, particularly severe violations of human rights freedom, ineligible for a U.S. visa. And the State Department here, international relations groups, whistleblowers from Modi's own administration, have over the past decade, since 2002, been very blatant in laying blame directly on Narendra Modi for, was known as the Gujarat genocide, which happened in 2002, when approximately 2,000 Muslims were massacred by police from Gujarat, as well as by politicians from Gujarat. A city politician at the time who participated in the genocide has admitted that Modi gave him a go-ahead on camera, he made his admission. So my question related to this issue is, what can we do to make sure that Narendra Modi does not get a U.S. visitor's visa?
Well, I'm not familiar with the case, so thank you for breaking my attention. I'll look into it myself, but first, if I had to make a change, I remember the Congress note, "Just done that, get rid of that information," and we can, you know, organize protests from the Congress to the State Department over that, but I can't comment as further because I don't know the details of the case. And by the way, don't stop there. Write letters to the editor, call them to talk shows, and raise the visibility of these issues so that elder citizens know this.
All right, I understand, I appreciate that. Yeah, we'll make sure that you're on this one information about that. My other question is, so obviously, there's this issue of the Gujarat genocide, but there's been a large number of other massacres of minorities that have gone on in India over the past 10, 20 years, without a single one of them receiving any form of actual justice from any government or from the state governments where they've occurred. The United States Commission on International Rights Freedom, in its 2011 report, specifically cited something that will mean a lot to the Sikhs here, which was the 1984 Sikh genocide, and they said that that was basically the basis for impunity in India, that that is the reason, that it can link back to there as far as Y84, 2002 Gujarat, also 2007, '08, and other states where Christians were massacred. And this is just a tip, but there's a lot of other issues that have gone on, but that are similar, that straight impunity has been dealt out with this. In fact, not just impunity, the perpetrators of these crimes have actually instead of being punished, have been voted. There are several names like this, Kamal Naq, Kamal Naq is currently serving in the unique government of the central government. He was directly involved in 1984 genocide. There's Sudhesh Saini, he was involved in picking up and eliminating Sikhs through death squads as part of Punjab Police in the 1990s, and he's now head of police in the entire state of Punjab. So considering all of that, considering that currently in 2013, that it's said that the United States is going to be giving India about $100 million of foreign aid, what would be your answer to the idea of cutting off foreign aid in India, as has been floated by Senator Rand Paul for other states that burn the American flag and perpetrate human rights violations such as Egypt, Pakistan, and India?
Well, I think, as far as foreign aid is concerned, I think the first principle needs to be that you need to know the difference between your friends and your enemies and treat your friends better. You know, frankly, I've become very, very skeptical of most of the foreign aid that you're going out there. There are certain strategic issues that are involved, for example, in the support of Israel, which holds the same strategic position in the Middle East as Britain held relative to European friendships in the 1930s. Its defense is very important, but if we're committed to that, why in the world are we also delivering billions of dollars of foreign aid to Pakistan and to Egypt, for example? With respect to India, I'm very skeptical of general foreign aid to India. I will say with respect to a lot of the problems that are going on in that country, the government ultimately operating the sufferings of their people, and changes in that governor ultimately the responsibility of the people of India. That said, however, the United States should not be complicit in the injustices that are going on there. I can't answer your question directly on the totality of any foreign aid because I don't know it off the top of my head. I'll tell you this, I've been voting against virtually every foreign aid act, it's just been coming down for the reasons I've just cited, that we tend to, I do not to take note of the differences between our friends and our enemies, and in many cases, we seem to be treating our friends better, our enemies better.
Congressman, we have time for one last question before we have to end this night.
Just one little thing, I'm just hoping that the Republicans pick up with the Democrats' bid in the last election about getting more into social media, Twitter, all that. But I understand it, and those ones that are in their 30s, 50s, do, so we need to pick up that. My only one question is, why did we, or did you, or not you, but the representative vote, John Baker back then, I think, very, very weak, nice man, maybe, very weak for our party. He, if something comes up, he made a statement on it, and that's it, and the president might like him anyway, so if you have someone in there that was living alive, you know, maybe he did something to this media, but they don't like following him. Unfortunately, he is a very boring person. He might be a nice guy, but he's very weak for our party. And why did we go there? I can't believe, I'm hoping I'm not going to kill someone, but I think he really is a good guy.
Let me outline my question. The Hill, which is a Capitol Hill publication, as the name implies, did an article last year on the 12 thorns in John Baker's sock, that was the title, 12 thorns in John Baker's sock. You're looking at one. That's it. I'm only a pro-Hincky speaker in this, for this session. The reason I did is because in order to replace them, as the term implies, you have to have a replacement. And unfortunately, those who were, those who were able to, who were capable of replacing them weren't willing, and those who were willing to replace them weren't capable. And that's the best answer I can offer to you. I've expressed my frustrations in the conference over a lot of the issues, and by the way, probably the single most common question that I get in any of these wars is a variation from what you just asked. We have to do better, and I think the conference realizes we have to do better, and ultimately, I think that that will unfold in the coming of time. I share your frustration, my frustrations have been noted by publications like the Delta. We need to do better, but we have not been able to yet. I don't know how else to put it into words, but I know what you mean. Well, so I want to thank you very much again. Yes, one more? Open this.
On behalf of the City of New York, I thank you all for coming here, in the weather of the current conditions, and especially for any questions, any concern, just contact us, and also we have a phone line to anybody, anytime. So also, if any, if anybody ever needs, please ask. Thank you very much.
I wanted to say something, if you have a chance, I'll have you around here, but also, if you've got any other questions or comments, you can make them directly to me, and I do thank all of you for coming. I thank our hosts in the Sikh community for their enormous hospitality tonight. If you go home and Google the Sikh religion, I think what you will find, as I said earlier, is that if there was a single theological expression of the principles of the American founding, it's the Sikh religion, and I think you'll find it fascinating, and I'm so grateful.
I think it's Sikh. It's Sikh. It's not sick.
It's Sikh.
It's Sikh.
S-I-K-E.
I thought it was Sikh.
But either way you pronounce it, it is a great expression of the American mind, and again, I'm very grateful for their hospitality today. Thank you.